Yeah, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
Good evening and welcome to the October fourteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This meeting is recorded and streamed by Millbury Public Access Cable Television, available live on public access channels Charter one ninety-one or Verizon twenty-six. This meeting is also available through zoom.us download or by phone. Anyone who is participating through zoom.us download or by phone should state their name and address when speaking. Okay, would you join me for the pledge allegiance?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Frog my throat. Okay, citizens speak. Questions for the Board of Selectmen should be forwarded to Town Manager at millburymass.gov by four P M. Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have anybody here? Come on up.
I've always wanted to do citizens speak. Kevin did it before. Most of you know me, but for those that don't on the outside world, my name is Leonard Mark. I'm the creator and host, along with my co-host Dory Doobie, of a cable access program in Millbury called Yesterday, Today, and Tomorrow. For many years, we have been producing various programs of the past and the present. Musicians, interesting people in town, items that are in town that very few people know about, such as the unique museum that we did here in town. And we have been producing these programs for approximately forty-five minutes to an hour long on the cable access, which is shown in Millbury, Sutton, and Grafton. But thinking things over, we have never done anything for the future. And I ran it by Kevin, and Kevin thought it was a very good idea. My co-host loved the idea. What we were going to do is a documentary. A documentary on the Millbury Fire Department, which goes back to into the eighteen hundreds where it started. And this was a long project, took us the better part of a year. And we managed to put a large project into a small package. The manager has a copy of it. It's it's a documentary on the fire department, especially when the fire station was in the old town hall, which ironically burned. And we covered the fire headquarters, the existing fire headquarters. And we toured the inside of the old fire headquarters. And we also toured the inside of the new fire headquarters during construction. Again, we toured the fire headquarters after the construction was done and they were completing furnishing the building. It is all on thumb drive. And for those people in town that have never been in the old fire headquarters and have not been to the dedication and the opening of the new fire headquarters, now they can go and they can see it on cable access. Kevin can tell you exactly when it will be aired and how to go about it. Kevin?
It will be ready on video demand midnight tonight.
So it'll be available tomorrow, and anyone in town can access it. It will be on YouTube as well. And that's all I have to say. So now you have a documentary. Or the fire department. I don't think a documentary has been made on anything else in town. So I think we're at first.
Nice. Look forward to it.
Enjoy it.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
My pleasure.
Come again.
Anybody else for citizens speak? Okay. Guest presentation, one, Mark Hollis, Director of Engineering Facilities and Sewer Operations. Sewer rate increase and senior center update. Oh, sewer increase. I don't like that.
Sewer increase.
Boo.
Good. All right. So good evening. Mark Hollis, Director of Engineering, Facilities and Sewer Operations. Tonight, I'm here to talk about our sewer rate increase. Thank you, Mary. And to kind of explain what we're doing these days, how we're looking at things, and to kind of show off some of the modeling we're doing of the Sewer Enterprise Fund. After that, I have a quick presentation on the senior center, and I have some pictures. So the thing about the senior center is it's going to look a lot like it did before. So I'd like to kind of show off some of the things that are happening behind the scenes. So to start with the sewer stuff here, we're utilizing a software called Waterworth. Essentially, it's Excel, but it's a really nice smooth version of Excel that's easy to use, and it really kind of communicates a nice little kind of chart at the end of it. So I'm going to take you through kind of some of the behind the scenes stuff of how this model is built, and then talk about why Gary in the Board of Sewer Commissioners decided to vote on a five percent increase this year. All right. So I have a few different scenarios here. The first one I'm going to jump into is the baseline scenario. Here is the picture. I will get into what all this means right now. So the first thing that we see here is just our general operating expenses. This is what we see annually. Everyone's used to seeing this, has the salary, the utilities, professional services, supplies, and all the stuff that gets voted on at town meeting. Two things I'd like to call your attention to, sewer utilities. That's a pretty substantial chunk of our budget. And, you know, right now, we're at two hundred thousand dollars a year. For our main pump station, we spend about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that gets paid to National Grid. The second big ticket item here is the Upper Blackstone Clean Water Assessment. That's what we pay for the Upper Blackstone to treat our sewage that we send there. And typically, that has gone up seven percent, so we've carried that seven percent through. And that's almost half of our budget, so that's a that's a pretty big driver of everything that you're going to see here. The next piece of this is our capital expenses, which is essentially, this is our capital plan. The cool part about this software is you can kind of pick and choose where you want to place some of these things. We've been working at this since July, and, you know, we can modify it as we go. As we find out new information, we're able to modify this stuff. For instance, we just finished the force main assessment. Turns out the force main is in pretty good shape. We don't have any active leaks. So in reality, I could probably take off a few of these, you know, emergency force main rehab line items that I carry through here. A couple of the big ticket ones, we need to replace the Rayburn Drive Pump Station. We've talked about that before, and the Wheelock Ave Pump Station.
Why are you guys all looking at me?
Hi, Mary.
So the next piece of this is we're going to look at our our current debt and also our proposed debt. So our current debt is based on previous projects where we did sewer expansions, pump station replacements, things like that. And then also, any any new projects that we have in mind are built into the model here. So to finance all those, you know, revenue needs that we have, here are actual revenues. The bulk of this comes from the sewer revenue, which is a sale of service. These are the sewer bills that that go out every quarter. And typically, we bring in about three million dollars a year based on that. We've included items for for betterments. We have A D U betterments. If Rice Pond ever comes online, we have a pretty substantial betterment coming from that project. So all of that is is also captured in this model. Finally, here, so here is our reserves. So essentially, here's our balance of our stabilization fund, our capital stabilization fund, and our return retained earnings. So at the beginning of this year, essentially, in the bank account, we started with about six point six million. So if we go back to the model here, what this is saying, and I'll kind of turn everything off for the time being. So essentially, here are kind of expenses that we have currently and for the next twenty years. So there's our operating expenses. There's our current debt service. There's our proposed debt service. And here are the capital projects that that we intend on doing. And to fund all these revenue needs, here comes the the actual revenue that's that's going to come in. And you'll see it's stagnant because we haven't included any increase just yet. So the developer contributions would be the I I impact fees and the betterments. So essentially, what you see here is, you know, over the next few years, our capital needs far exceed our actual revenues that we have coming in. So we need a way to kind of to to balance this equation. So if we don't make any rate changes at all, you'll see in this black line here, that's our cash position. And by twenty thirty-three, essentially, the sewer department will be out of money. So once we kind of have that as our established baseline, then we need to look into, okay, so how much of an increase do we need to to provide here to kind of keep this thing afloat? So I'll show you some of the different scenarios that we looked at. So in years past, we've gone up three percent. A three percent helps, but it also just kind of pushes the problem out a few years. Four percent increase, similar, pushes out another few years, but doesn't really get us where we want to be, where it kind of we have a long term success. And essentially, here's where we landed. This is our five percent rate adjustment. And you see how the the black cash position kind of follows along with with our revenue goals. So that's why we landed on five percent. So now your next question might be, all right, so what does that look like for the average, you know, sewer user? So I've pulled some data here. So I consider myself an average household in Millbury. I have two adults, two kids, a dog. We use about twelve thousand gallons of water. So my bill will go up about eight dollars per quarter or thirty-three dollars per year. For someone like Gary, who's in a different stage of his life, he's a he's a senior with two people in his home, his bill will go up about five dollars per quarter or twenty-two dollars per year. And then finally, I talked about the the electricity needs at our main pump station, so we're working on that as well. We're doing everything we can to kind of reduce some of our expenses. We did receive a technical assistance grant from the Department of Energy. That was fifteen thousand dollars. And then I'll essentially look at a full feasibility study to determine exactly how much solar we need to to power our whole main pump station. The second piece of that is a gap four grant. We've applied for that. We haven't heard back just yet. But essentially, that would fund a full build out of a seventy-four kilowatt solar array right down there at the at the sewer department. Our cost for that would be about thirty thousand dollars, and we expect to kind of get that paid back within a year. Finally, here, this is my favorite one. Where this is going to come out this fall. We plan on applying for it. It's wastewater energy recovery. And the idea here is to use the the excess thermal energy from the sewer to the kind of such using heat pump technology and pulling that radiant heat from our wet well to to heat the pump station and our offices. So hopefully, you know, these are things that will, in time, you know, once we get some of these, you know, built out, we can modify our our financial model. And then in the future, we don't have to go up five percent every year is kind of the goal. But for now, five percent is where we landed. I just felt like we should give you guys some background on how we got there. Any questions?
When will that take effect?
The bills go out this week. And that that increase will be on those bills.
Good thing I did my outside meter.
The chair, just a quick question. So are you able to speak a little bit more to what Waterworth is? I just want to make sure I understand that it's a data reporting system that you're implementing, not a utility system. I'm mainly just asking for the background of like what that software is used for internally.
Yeah, so essentially, it's just a it's a smoother way for us to kind of figure out our finances of the sewer department.
Okay.
So, you know, we've dealt with really clunky spreadsheets in the past, or we've also done rate studies in the past. So if you pay for a thirty thousand dollar rate study, the second it hits your desk, it's outdated. So this is a software that we pay for annually, and we're able to kind of modify it and adjust it and speak to our board about where we're going with with our finances of the sewer department.
Understood. Okay. It's like basically your QuickBooks.
Yeah, sure.
Basically, my idea was I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, I want to make sure I understood what the software is used for because some softwares that are being integrated into some of the systems of how towns are operating can be also very costly. So I just wanted to understand what your purpose behind it is. So thank you.
I have a question for the chair. How does the stabilization fund, how is that accounted for within the software and the plan and the five percent increase?
So essentially, it's there that that money is accounted for. Let me just go back to the graph here. So you'll see in twenty twenty-six, we're going to start at six point six million, and then that's what we have now in our stabilization, retained earnings, and capital stabilization. So we we've kind of included all of that as as one bucket. I know that they're they're different, like there's different technicalities, but it's just it's it's all one bucket. It's all here. Here's our starting point. This is where it's going to go from here.
Okay. No, that makes a lot of sense then, because you have, since you have the capital in there, it makes sense to have the stabilization in there, too.
Right.
I just really want to express how I appreciate how clear and concise you are when you explain the work that you do, because this is certainly not something I had experience with. So I'm learning a lot from you. I think this is very helpful to explain to the residents and to have a visual and also to myself and the board. And I also want to commend you for your use of technology, because that's something that you've really brought with you to this role, which was a new role, and I think you've really done a tremendous job really putting your thumbprint on it. But Mark is really great about understanding and using technology to do the work in a more efficient way, tell a better story, track data. And this is super helpful just to look at it this way. For me, I'm a more of a visual person, so hopefully, this will help other people watching as well. But you just are doing a great job. I'm so impressed with the work that you're doing. And Gary and everyone on the team. Yes.
Also, I mean, I'm a resident, too. I have no interest in raising my bills, but here it is.
You've got to do it.
Here's here's why we have to do it. Yeah.
Yeah. I like that the software replaces rate studies and kind of gives you that outlook, that future outlook, as opposed to, yeah, I mean, I helped with the sewer rate when I was Finance Director, and, you know, you've not, you're just looking at where you are now, and this is much more like a sustainable plan.
Sure.
Great.
And through the chair, just to make sure I understand correctly, the five percent is speaking to a year-over-year increase annualized. So it's going to be five percent this year, then whatever that number is, five percent the next year on top of that. And then whatever that number is, five percent.
So for now, that's that's what we're projecting.
So like
We're going to do this again next year. We're going to continue to do this. We're going to try to bring down costs. We're going to try to get some grants to kind of to to bring down. We're going to, you know, we're going to do the best we can to kind of capture more of our flow. But for now, this is suggesting we need five percent increases every year.
Every year?
Yes.
Okay. And that rate, like you said, can be revisited on an annualized basis?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So the people on T V who are seeing, oh, my God, this is going up five percent every single year, annualized.
Right.
Exponentially, what is that going to look like? Because, you know, most people don't even get five percent raises, right? So I want to make sure people understand that that can adjust.
Right.
And obviously, no one has an interest in raising rates, especially including you're a resident. So thank you for explaining that.
Okay.
I'm going to ask the icky question, but tell me a little about the mitigating electricity costs to run the pump station. You said you're going to use sewer.
So the idea is, it's essentially using heat pump technology. Which you're kind of pulling ambient temperatures out of the atmosphere, and you're you're piping that into your building. So our wet well right now is at seventy degrees pretty much always. So the idea is to take some of that, take that seventy degrees and kind of use that to heat our our pump station building, as opposed to having to run electric heaters, or we use oil in our in our office. It's a heat exchanger, pretty much. Yeah, right. So I mean, it's, I I get it. It's a little bit icky, but we'll we'll see.
Well, I just
Here it goes.
It was a way to use waste to make electricity. What the heck? We might as well. I'll keep flushing.
Make sure it's nice and warm, you know.
Also, if I could, through the chair, I just also want to say I really appreciate that you're always looking for grants, too. I know that you and Connor, our town planner, collaborate, that you guys work with the schools. So it's always nice to see, you know, when we can go after a grant, that makes sense. But when we're awarded the grant as well. But I know you're always looking, and I appreciate that, too.
I just have one more. I want you to tell me about your trip down the Blackstone. I asked Connor earlier.
Yeah, it was it was good. We started off with like, I don't want to call it a rapid, but it was it was quick. Then the kayak was kind of bouncing off the rocks. It's certainly shallow at points where you have to do some butt scooching, as they call it. We had to get out and and kind of just go over the the Millbury Electric Dam. And the whole point of that is that that Blackstone Coalition that we were with, they're trying to remove that dam.
Where is that dam, like for the dam?
Just upstream of like the D B W and Sewer Department.
Oh, okay.
Maybe quarter mile, something like that. So the goal is to kind of remove that because it doesn't serve a purpose anymore. And they would like that gone just for environmental impacts and things like that.
How far did you go down just to?
We went all the way to Sutton at the Bicentennial Park.
Wow.
And it was about two miles and
Then you came back up? Or no?
No, it was
Who picked you guys up with the kayaks at the end?
What's that?
Who brought you guys back with the kayaks?
The Blackstone folks.
Oh, that was nice of them.
They had a truck, yeah, with four kayaks, all that good stuff, yeah.
Great. I saw some pictures of you guys.
I did, too. That's why I said, oh, I'm going to ask him about it tonight.
Yeah, it was good. Recommend it.
Good. Anybody else have any questions? Well, okay, let's go to the senior center.
All right, on to the next one. All right. So the senior center, substantial project over there, a lot of improvements. I'll just kind of run down this list. We got the interior of the building painted back in early twenty twenty-five. Insulation was done, it was supposed to be done last Friday. It's going to be done this Friday, as these things tend to go. We had to rebuild the catwalk for access purposes. If you can follow my mouse here, that's that's this area, and essentially, that just provides access above all the insulation. So there's also an H V A C component to this. There's four new furnaces and four new condensers that were able to be downsized due to all the the added insulation. Then there's going to be new acoustical ceiling tiles. That's kind of the last piece of this. So that should be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. Laurie got a grant for pantry updates. We're going to get that contractor in after all these other contractors. That should be done late October, early November. We're waiting to hear back on an A D A grant to kind of wrap up some of the A D A projects we have to do in that building. And then finally, we have a flat roof restoration, which is on the the special town meeting warrant. I'll show you some pictures later on about really why we need to do that. So the goal, and I think it's it's perfectly reasonable, is to to open the senior center in early December. Just a bit about the history of the project. So this goes all the way back to twenty-two, twenty-three. This was a community development block grant. This was paired with the Maple Street Reconstruction Project. It took three bids to actually to to get this to happen here. The the first bid, there was no qualified bidders. We added in the H V A C project. The second bid was had to be tossed due to an error from one of the bidders. And then we finally had a successful bid back in May of twenty twenty-five. This graph here is from Mass Energy Insights, and it's pretty much just shows that the senior center is the most energy-intensive building in town. So this project was absolutely necessary. Here was the existing dining room, and then this is what it looked like once we pulled those ceiling tiles down. You can see all the fiberglass batts just all over the place. This really wasn't a very efficient insulation at that at that point. Over here, you'll see that that we ended up going with closed cell spray insulation in that building. The architects had thought that the truss spacing was eight feet. Turns out it was sixteen feet. So they couldn't build out the actual fiberglass bats that they wanted. So they were able to kind of just get a change order on the books and just spray that room instead. Some more pictures of, this is like the main entry into the senior center. You'll see how it looked as soon as we pulled the ceiling down. It was just just insulation everywhere. It wasn't good. This, I just thought, was a cool picture. This is this is the catwalk before it was rebuilt. And essentially, this is what the finished product looks like. There's insulation, vapor barrier, strapping, another vapor barrier. So it's going to be just a very tight building at the end of all this. Here was our furnaces, or here was our condenser, sorry, at the outside of the building. I pulled out this picture just because it says this particular unit was manufactured in nineteen ninety-six. So again, definitely time to to get this done. Here was one of the furnaces with the fiberglass batches all over the thing, probably in unsafe condition. And then we are close to kind of completing that part of it, which will look like that. So a bit about the roof. So we had roof leaks back in March. We knew this project was coming up. And you can see there was essentially holes. All the seams were starting to come up. The fasteners were popping through the rubber. We have a trash bag over one of the turbine vents. So the the roof needed work. We got that work done. So all of these defects you see here were repaired back in March. Now, about two days before we were going to do the insulation, we had another roof leak. And it turns out, with everything open, it was nice because you could see exactly where it was coming from. Turns out it was coming from this seam here, so that we had someone else go back up there, wrap that up. So now that all that's tight. But you'll see with the roof, there's still ponding. There's not much left of the rubber membrane. So this absolutely needs to be repaired. So hopefully, everyone kind of supports this at that Fall of Town meeting here. That's all I got.
Yes, we're done.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions about the senior center?
Very informative. Thank you.
As you went, every one of my questions kept going.
Good. Done. Yeah, sure.
Nice job, Mark.
What's always nice about these types of presentations with the amount of detail you put into it, it's just a very easy thing for us to communicate to the rest of the town, too. We always have this now on video for people to reference back on. So and to your point, I think you were right to do this because so much of this stuff is internal that once this thing's finished, it's it's kind of meant to replicate what was there. So you're never going to see behind the drop ceiling what was done internally. So I really appreciate you bringing this up for us, but more so just for the town. And we always have this archived for everybody to truly kind of see the sausage as it got made versus the finished product. I've been doing a lot of cooking lately.
And just through the chair, just to clarify, you said that the roof repair, because the membrane is starting to fade, is on for a town warrant this fall.
Yes.
And that is set to be voted for. So if we want sixty thousand dollars worth of work to last, I implore people to think about that when they go to vote.
Yes.
So
Right. So I mean, the total cost of the H V A C upgrades and all the insulation was closer to four hundred thousand.
Way more than I thought.
We want to protect it with a fifty thousand dollar roof. Right.
Nice job.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next guest presentation to Nicole Valentine, Deputy Town Manager, Director of HR, Emergency Management Update.
So I do not have fancy slides, because they would be pictures of me reading reports and scratching my head and talking to myself, so nobody wants to see that. So, we'll go right into what has been happening. The town manager had asked me, just to give you a quick update, uh, as you know, I started in July, so I've only had a couple of months. But, uh, basically, I've spent the last two months reviewing plans and meeting with our coordinator at Massachusetts Emergency Management to get my finger on the pulse as to where are we with emergency management. This includes reviewing our current response manual and the reporting structure and identifying required documentation that has been missing. We're participating in quarterly statewide calls, it helps me to become educated as to the requirements of the town. With those reporting structures, anything in regards to, um, planning and preparedness drills, trainings, et cetera. What we have had, and in our case, what we haven't had to date right now. Um, we've identified missed training and grant opportunities as well over the past three years. The grants that we both need and that we are eligible for, to apply for, to help build a robust, um, emergency management plan moving forward. We're currently working to reinstate the emergency management volunteers. I did not want to bring them all together as a group just yet, because I really, again, wanted to get my finger on the pulse to see where we are. And what we need to grow together, and what type of skills they will be able to bring to the table to help me to improve that plan. I do wanna point out, um, that both the police department and fire department, both chiefs have been incredibly supportive and are right on target with their preparedness needs and what they need to do. It's more in regards to the coordinating of the drills, um, the state and regional partnerships and collaborations where we could be sharing resources, and the training, so that hadn't been prioritized as much in the past, and that would be my role moving forward, is to bring in the missing pieces and to start that coordination. So, I do wanna say that we have been shoulder to shoulder with both the police department and, um, the fire department, and they've been incredible, helping me to find the plans and supporting me as we move forward. We do have some positive news, as of July, we completed the hazard mitigation plan. That was an all hands on deck, um, from all of our department heads, they did a great job bringing that together and helps us to identify, again, where we need to be focusing on, what type of hazards could in May and probably will happen in the town of Millbury, and what we should be prepared for. One of our biggest priorities is the continuity of operations plan. This is something that is missing right now, you'll see it in Shared Point, um, there's a great deck from MEMA that describes the plan and the purpose of the plan. This is one of the most crucial documents. A COOP plan enables our communities to resume essential operations within twelve hours of an emergency and sustain our emergency operations of the municipality for up to thirty days. So today, uh, the town manager and I hosted MEMA, they came in for their first meeting with all of our department heads and really broke down the COOP in every essential element of that and helped our leadership team understand exactly what their role is in providing information department by department, what they need to be able to take with them in an emergency. If this building were closed tomorrow because a train derailed and took out town hall and the police department, do they have their vital records, um, in a safe place, copies of these vital records? Do they have laptops available? Do they have cell phones? Do they have copies of all of their vendors? And how are we going to continue operations on a daily basis if we cannot come here to town hall to operate and function as we normally do? Very eye-opening for all of our department heads, I think, um, MEMA will be a great asset, because they also offer to come in and meet with each department head and write their plan with them. So we're very fortunate to have MEMA as a partner in that. Um, additional upcoming assessments and trainings, uh, the town manager and I attended a cybersecurity and risk analysis meeting with our insurance provider. Very interesting, cybersecurity is one of the biggest threats to a municipality right now, um, and could cost us millions in ransom with just one keystroke. As I said, we met last week with our insurance providers, uh, to ensure that we do have adequate coverage and also to make sure that we are going to take advantage of all of the trainings that are available to our employees to make sure this does not happen. Um, MEMA does also offer these trainings, so between the two, we'll have a great base to really work with the employees and really identify the threats that are coming day to day throughout municipalities right now. Some have paid some pretty big ransoms, and we do not wanna be in that situation, so one of the biggest threats that we're working on right now. Uh, we've also convened Chief Lewis and Chief Strom to identify the current priorities of public safety. The number one priority that we've discussed and continue to discuss is the identity, uh, excuse me, the identification of a need for the radio study and to assess the current systems and coverage. Since these discussions, we've had, been approached by the state and the regional communication team to meet in regards to the benefits of regionalizing our dispatch functions with neighboring communities. It's not a matter of if, it's basically when this does happen, and we wanna make sure that we have all the information that we need to make a sound decision as to what is best for the town. Uh, the chiefs and I will be meeting with the Central Mass Regional nine-one-one District to explore whether Millbury might be a good fit for the regionalized dispatch services. Currently, the district includes Barry, Hubbardston, Rutland, Oakham, and Warren, and they've also welcomed commitments from Sturbridge, Spencer, Chelton, and Auburn. And it looks like Southridge, Sutton, and Oxford may be right around the corner and join the region as well. They're in the process of meeting with their select boards for consideration. In order to support the growth of the region, the regional district is negotiating the purchase of an eighteen thousand square foot facility, which will be renovated to meet the needs of the expanding district, and this will host all of the regional towns. As I said, um, benefits may include access to funding for resources such as state-of-the-art radio equipment, repeaters, and additional interoperability equipment, which saves us money, which may go directly back into public safety, which could be in the form of firefighters, police officers, et cetera. This is a very fluid conversation, we'll keep you posted as we work to find out what the best solution is for Millbury going forward, and we will bring those recommendations to you for consideration. Finally, just one other little piece that MEMA is working with us on is working to update our wireless emergency communication notification system. This is, um, a free system that we now have the ability to utilize with the state, and this would include notifications for residents of imminent public safety threats, weather emergencies, and, um, situations like missing people notifications. These messages can be sent out within one mile radius or to every cellphone within the town with one call to MEMA, so it's a great asset. And as we continue to work with MEMA on our quarterly meetings, we'll be bringing this information to you. Any questions? It's a lot. It is a lot.
Through the chair? Just one comment, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that I really appreciate, um, looking at cybersecurity. It's really overlooked, and if anyone had a chance to watch Sixty Minutes this past week.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
I think the stuff happening in Littleton is really, really scary, where basically foreign actors were able to, from China, were able to hack into Little, Littleton, which is a play on words, but it's literally a very small town, just like Millbury. And, I mean, decimate their ability to manage their own water supply. And I think that, um, you know, where I work, we work a lot with sensitive data and information for our, um, students and alumni. And what's important for us is that we get tested, um, constantly on, you know, spam emails and things like that, that they can use to trick us into getting, you know, to sharing information, or even, um, you know, fake emails that are being created that look just like your boss's email. Um, I guess, as a part of this assessment, is there a component to that where, uh, MEMA is working directly with staff on how they can identify phishing scams and how to be better prepared so that, you know, we empower staff members to be guardians of the information that is within these walls? Cause it's, you know, residents' information and their addresses and so on.
We do, so MEMA do, uh, does come in, and they do have courses available for the staff, but also working through the insurance provider, and at the conference on Thursday, we learned that they also will come in, work with us. And if we do put the staff through trainings, we do receive discounts for the coverage based on the fact that we are working hard to mitigate the risk moving forward.
And I, I guess my only other question is, is, um, I know that, um, at top of my mind has always been information security. I know that we, um, outsource out to Worldband. Do we have an understanding through them exactly what they are doing to protect us as well? Um, and, or does it make sense to, to transition that internally, has your review found that?
It's interesting that you ask that specific question, because Karen and I are meeting with them tomorrow in regards to this.
I swear I didn't read anyone's mind.
So thank you for that, I will Venmo you later.
Yes.
Um, but no, that's a really great point.
We asked for a meeting with the owner of the company after that conference.
So that we can understand the safeguards, we do have, um, the authenticators, et cetera. We do have a lot of safeguards in place, and that's something else that the insurance provider did point out to us, that we're in good shape, but we can always be better, because these, um, hackers and the cyber scams, they're much smarter than we are. And again, it could be one click away, and it.
Yeah.
It's scary, it really is. And costs millions of dollars in ransom to towns that have already been scammed.
Yeah, it, I mean, I gotta, I alert my dad's agency about this, they mimic emails that look exactly like my dad's bosses, and, and it's crazy that these people know what to say. Um, and I almost responded to the email, and it's a fake email, they wanted me to click into, um, a PDF, because I was working on a project with them. And I almost fell victim to it, and it's, you know, I'm, I'm someone who's, you know, rational and competent, I like to think, and it can happen to really anyone.
Right.
So it, it, it can happen to employees, it can happen to staff, it can happen to vendors, so, um, I appreciate your work on it. I think it's really important, and thanks for meeting with them tomorrow, cause that's the number one thing that keeps me, you know, awake, even with my own businesses, is just, you know, somehow losing access or getting hacked.
I think the key is that it can happen to anybody as well. Labor Day weekend, I did receive an email stating, if you receive an email from so-and-so at MEMA, do not click, his system has been compromised. He's a MEMA coordinator, it went statewide, and their entire system was compromised, so it can, it's just something that we need to be aware of and stay on top of.
I had the weirdest calendar invite, and it was through this, it was through Millbury. It was like a calendar invite, it just popped up in my Outlook as a calendar invite, and when I clicked on it, it was, it was something related to, I don't remember if it was payroll, or it was something, something.
Yes.
It didn't make any sense to me, so, I mean, I didn't click any.
It was from, from, um, one of the police officers, and it went out his entire distribution list. Yeah, that was.
Well, to me, it looked like.
It does look real.
It does, it's because it is.
I thought it looked like something fake.
It is their email, though, and that's what's, and I have emails from, uh, it's so strange, um, several police downstairs, people from the library, some of our board and committee members that have town emails, and it'll say, hi Karen, you know, um, can you help me with my changing on my direct deposit?
That happens all the time, yeah.
And sometimes it'll say the person's name and their title, and it's correct. I mean, we know we're not looking for it, and we know what it is, but it is their email address, there's no, it's not, you know, from the prince of Nigeria anymore, it's, you know, you know what I mean? Like those emails that you went, yeah, what's this? Um, it's getting more sophisticated, and it's something that, um, has been on my mind for a while since I've been here. But I think with the conference and the work that Nicole's been doing with MEMA, it kinda dovetails into the EM work as well. Um, so I'm glad that we're gonna be having some conversations and trying to figure out how we can get the staff more educated and to look for things and how to report it. And I know we're interested in, um, having some, you know, simulated things that go out, to see if people click on them.
Oh, yeah.
Which is important, too. We, that happened when we worked in Worcester, um, the tech services department actually had a cybersecurity staff person, and we had to do all these modules, and then they would send it out, see if you'd click. I think the department that had the least amount of clicks got a pizza party or something. My department never got a pizza party.
Nor did mine.
So we're, we're familiar with.
Clicking on things all the time.
Correct, absolutely.
And if you see it, or if it doesn't look right, just send it to me, and we will send it over to the, um, IT department for them. If you ever see something that's crazy, we wanna report them immediately, so they can start to review them.
Nice work, Nicole.
Good job.
Thanks. Next time I'll have pictures.
Talk to Mark, I bet she can help you out.
Yeah, I bet.
I know he helped me with the position of the flags and stuff down at the vet. Well, he had it all on his computer, I was like, who the hell is? Okay, new business, one special town election warrant, vote to approve and sign. Do we, we don't have to read it, do we? Do you wanna, I'd make Brian read it if you did.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian.
Right, right, right. In unison.
Yeah, let's harmonize.
That's right.
Can I get a motion, or?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, um, I'll make a motion to approve the special town election warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Final reading adoption of the employee handbook. Everybody okay with the changes?
Yeah, I didn't see any issue, the only, I, I just had more of like, just a question, that was just more out of curiosity. The, the human resources policies that were removed to a separate one, are, was that pretty much just pulled it out and that's its own document? Was there any changes on those, or are those getting worked out after?
We haven't gotten to those yet, we wanted to do the handbook, and next we'll be tackling all of the policies. Some of the policies are a little outdated as well, so we wanted to make sure that we looked at each one reviewed and then had a policy annex that will go on with the handbook.
Yeah, I think that makes sense, so.
Can I add one quick question about the recruiting? So, on recruiting C, um, it says, any applicant supplying false or misleading information is subject to immediate termination if hired. Is there a way, I didn't read this, read this in the policy, but is there a way for that person to just be disqualified or to add language saying that if you're supplying misleading information, um, and we, you know, you do your background on them, and they're finalists, that they're immediately disqualified, so we don't even, you know, just so that you have both bases covered?
Certainly.
Only one observation I had throughout reading the entire handbook, so.
Yeah, I think that's a great, yes.
Okay. Let's not hire them.
No, no.
No, like, let's not even get to that point.
Right.
Yeah, I hear you, I think that was leftover language, but when, just when you said it out loud, I'm like, yeah, let's, let's not even go that far.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's helpful.
No problem.
Okay, everybody all set then? Let's get that off our agenda.
So we can, if, you wanna go ahead and approve it with those, with the change as noted, we'll make that edit and.
Should we, perfect, should we vote to do that with the change now?
Yes, if you would, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt the new employee handbook with, as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's been going on for the whole three years I've been here, to get that over the finish line, so.
Good work.
Thank you.
Confetti fall. Thank you all, thank for reading that, I appreciate it.
Okay, management update, I just clicked on it, I'm very, very sad.
Goes on and on and on, there's some clip art, um, so I'll just pick a few things to mention. First and foremost, I just wanted to let everyone know, I learned this morning that John Padoni, who's been with DPW Highway Foreman for a long time, um, actually over ten years, he's gonna be moving on, um, from the town, it's very bittersweet, I'm excited for John, um, he has a great opportunity for him and his family, but he is, John is one of a kind, um, you know him, he's a, a super hard worker, he's a character. I've really enjoyed working with him, um, so I just wanna really express how much I appreciate all his hard work. There's so many things, you know, when you think about John out in the elements, or plowing, or throwing plates down, or, you know, getting screamed at by everybody. Um, he's, he's been a tremendous asset to this town, and, um, we're gonna feel his loss, and, um, but I am thrilled for him, and, and I wish him all the best, so I just wanted to let you know that. His last day will be Halloween, that is not a treat, it is a trick. Just a few projects, um, updates on projects, um, North Main Street Bike Lane and Pedestrian Crossing started last week. Um, we anticipate November eleventh, knock on wood, um, will be, when that will be wrapping up. Connor's been talking with Lynch, um, I know Selectman Lozaro had gotten some feedback, um, from folks in that area. in that area. So when Amanda gets back tomorrow, we're going to try to, there is information, excuse me, on the town website, but I want to do some social media. I assumed erroneously that that had happened. It really just kind of landed on the website, so we want to get more information out. It doesn't sound like there'll be any closures, but there will be some milling and paving going on. And we're hoping that it's smooth sailing and that it does get completed mid-November, so about a month. I don't know if anybody has any comments or heard anything else.
No, I just had asked Connor to post it.
Yep.
I didn't know how my, I was being selfish and wanted to know how my commute to work was going to be.
Not at all. So hopefully this will be quick.
I have a quick question about the project, too. I just want to clarify the funding of it. So that, just to make sure I'm understanding, is from a grant in 2022 that was allocated for this project, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I also was relaying proper information.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a complete streets grant.
Right, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
And the school helped pay with their.
This, so it ended up, it's over what we had. So DPW agreed to take on some of the work to cut costs. I know there's a specific name, I think they're called like RR something. It's like, everything has an acronym, but it's the flashers, fancy way of calling them flashers, the flashing lights. And we asked, we were short money, so we asked the school administration if they would fund the one that was down more towards the school, because there's about 100 kids a day that walk. And they jumped right in. They were super supportive. Connor's been working with Greg and Rick on that. So hopefully this will help, and we'll get some bike lanes out of it. But again, I want to apologize to anyone who was caught off guard or didn't know about it. Typically, these projects come through DPW, and we have, I think, a system in place for notification, I think, because this one's been talked about on and off for two years, and it's kind of originating out of the planning office. I don't think we kind of crossed the Ts or dotted the Is as well as we usually do with communication. So hopefully, we can rectify some of that when Amanda comes back tomorrow. I met with Matt Stensel this morning, our DPW director. He said that they're still on target for December 12 completion date. So fingers and toes crossed. I want to thank Jude Cristo, who's been very much giving us the visuals of what's going on down in that neighborhood, and has had a lot of great suggestions to the chief of police and DPW director about some additional signs. There are some people that are still turning around on the dead end, but I think it's a new traffic pattern. I think it's not as crazy as it was the first few days. But, so hopefully, we're all done with that project mid-December. Road Street Bridge, so apparently Matt received a call from someone at Mast dot. The feds changed their classification for bridge, bridges that need to be done, or their failure, where they are on the failure scale. So unofficially, we're hearing that Mast dot might be able to put some funds because of this new classification towards that bridge. That being said, we've learned from Keith Caruso and from Matt Stensel that there's a big process to get these things approved, even if they are being flagged by Mast dot or the state, or the feds, sorry, to get them done. It's still like five years out. So there are plates down there, but Matt was looking at the possibility of putting in a temporary bridge, which would probably cost us money upfront, but I think we could get reimbursed. So he's looking into that. It still would have to have a design done. It has to be approved by Army Corps of Engineers and everyone up, you know, we've gone through this before to kind of understand why it takes so long. But if they want to help pay, I was very excited to hear that. So I asked if him, for him to get that writing, instead of not on the phone. So that's at least some hope there, that we could get some relief with the funding. Speaking of funding, just a couple of good news nuggets I'd like to share. Connor had put in for a digital equity implementation grant from the Mass Broadband Institute, and the town received just about $60,000. So I kind of listed out some of the things they're going to do. One year free digital online literacy services for residents, funding a one-year part-time digital literally, liter, literary? Wow. Say that word, Katie. Literary.
Yeah, you got it.
Wow, okay, thank you. You know when you're like, it's not, it's photography, it's not photography?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Executor, executor.
Thank you.
I keep saying executor, I mean executor.
My apologies. Sometimes the word just, you know it's wrong, but you keep saying it wrong. Funding for the school's Chromebook reuse initiative. So Connor had been working with the school, the library, and the senior center about how we would use these funds if we get the grant. So he got the grant. Now the person who's going to get hired to do this will help work with the different town buildings to implement some programs. Also got a technical assistance award, $50,000 from Mass Development, that is going to help provide TA to us as we're developing the RFP for the reuse of the old fire department headquarters. So I'm very excited about that. Congrats to Connor. Just a few other things. I did get confirmation from the printers that the warrant has been printed and will be mailed out to residents on October 17. And they'll drop off a whole bunch of them here. So I was happy to hear that. And it'll report also at the printers. And that's, I mean, there's a million other things, but I'll stop there. Oh, just want to thank Warren Gardner again and the DPW crew. They put some additional landscaping this afternoon down behind the police department. It's looking pretty fabulous. So just want to thank him for that. And including that in the whole landscape vision that I had here for Town Hall. Any questions? Are you sure?
No, I'm thinking of.
I saw that look.
It's not, it's not related to your report. It's actually just a follow-up.
Sure.
For something that was, we, we had gotten, I think, when Keith was the DPW director, a list for the summer of paving projects that he was looking to have done. I was just curious, if possible, maybe for the next meeting or a couple of meetings after, once you gather information, what the status of some of those are, and what the forecast could be for when those are going to be completed. I know my tires are getting real chopped up on West Street, which I know was on that.
Okay.
That list, which is that road leading towards Felter's past the church. And I know, like, Nicole Drive was on there. There's a few others. So I just was hoping to have a follow-up on that, because I remember that being.
So that was the list that Keith had provided?
Mm-hmm.
So that was probably?
It was in the spring.
Spring, okay.
It was the springtime.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course.
I just want to follow up on this citizen that came in from Oak Pond Ave. I talked to the chief, and he was putting out the posted speed limit sign. And then he was going to put the star radar kit after that.
Oh, great.
So I know she was still, had some issues, I saw it on Facebook, but we're doing the best we can right now. So I just wanted to reach out to her and tell her that. I'm just going through your report, because I didn't read it today.
It's long. It's miscellaneous.
Not that I'm criticizing, but it wasn't there when I looked earlier today. So I was looking.
It was not.
I actually tried to like, be prepared.
I thought I had already done it and put it there.
Oh.
I did not. And Amy reminded me. Thank you, Amy. So she put it in there for me. Sorry about that.
No, not a big deal at all.
I had Good Neighbor Day on a good note, if we want to say something now, or, you know, kudos to Tracy and her team, as they pulled off a successful event. Congratulations to all the nominees, and Mark Goretty for being good neighbors. We appreciate it. I missed the breakfast, but the dinner was very, very good. So we're going to have a committee of that for next year. So I'll be looking for this board to help out.
Yes.
I nominated us all, just so you know.
We're all nominated.
It's a good day.
Nice.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions?
I have something for citizens feedback.
Okay, we'll get to that. Okay. Review and approve previous minutes, minutes of August 26, 2025.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 26, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we want to do dates? Oh, we'll do roundtable discussion and citizens feedback. Limited to three minutes. Discussion on agenda items heard at this meeting only.
I just have one, one note to add. A resident had reached out to me, and I wanted to float this to the committee. She unfortunately was involved in a traffic accident as a pedestrian. And I can't, for legal reasons, for her safety and protection, as she's in litigation right now, I'm not going to mention her name, but I wanted to share with the board her request into looking into some of the signage changes in specifically very high-density areas where she was hit and struck by a vehicle. She is okay. She's just injured, and she's working on recovery. But I wanted to make the board aware that she had reached out to me, and I had reached out to Chief Luos and the, Mr. Stensel regarding signage, and what the right-hand turn would look like for some of our more dense areas in town. That would look like, you know, your Main Street, corner of Elm. We're looking at Village Noel, things like that. Those are very high-density areas, high-traffic, people doing rights on red, which is legal. But as most of us are, might be guilty of it, sometimes you, you're not looking to your blind spot on the right all the time. You're more looking for the traffic that's coming on as you're taking a right-hand turn. And that unfortunately is how she was struck. So I wanted to float this up to the board to see if they would consider taking this up in the, at a meeting in the future about for those two intersections to, I guess, put a no-turn-on-red sign, which would have to be approved by the board for both of those intersections. And.
Did you say Main and?
So you know the Pearl Cafe Corner?
Yeah, those are there. They just need to be activated.
The lights, yeah.
The lights need to be activated. They haven't been working right. Because I almost got hit going.
Yeah.
As a pedestrian there, because someone was turning right on red. And I was crossing from like Pearl Cafe to, as if I'm going over to South Main to Calabria, and someone was making a right-hand turn. And I said, well, where are those right-hand, like, because it's supposed to, when the walk sign comes on, it's supposed to say, no turn on red.
Correct.
So those just need to be activated.
Yeah. So I guess maybe that.
That's just a, that's really a question for.
Yeah.
The administration to bring to whoever's in charge of those lights, I guess, right? At least particularly that one.
For that one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. I think the other one was down towards, so there's one, I might be also.
I was confused, because she said Canal and West Main Street. And I'm like, wait, Canal doesn't touch.
No. So I think what I was, yeah, what I deduced from that conversation was, I think she was referring to the one at the center of town. I can follow up with her, but I wanted to see if the board would kind of, would look at, into that a bit more.
I think you'd have to go through the chief for that. I don't know if that's something.
Chucked it up to us.
Yeah, so this was, which other intersection was it?
I believe it's the crossing at the Village Noel, when people are going down the hill. So when you're going down the hill, and you're crossing the street from the Village Noel to go to the other side.
There's no light there, so you'd have to have some kind of like.
Yeah, you can't do that there.
Kind of traffic.
There should be like a blinking stop or something.
There's no stop there, no.
No, there's no light there.
Not on West Main, you're just driving.
Right, right.
But they do have those, like, you know, what's his face? I'm sorry.
Timmy Cullen.
Yes.
Well, they are there.
That's right. I didn't mean to say it that way. But he mentioned at town meeting, having some of those installed, and that's something. So those yellow flashing lights, where they press the signal.
They are there. They just don't work. Yeah, like I noticed the ones that.
They are there at the Village Noel?
Goretty's doesn't work either.
Right, yeah, that's another one. But I've just, I'm like, looking into this, and it's like an unfolding.
Well, that one's more, I think, I think if you were to add something, it's a, it's, it's bigger than, than us. I mean, it's, it's us to say to, to these folks right here, say, you know, maybe the DPW could look at it, or funding concerns for another town meeting, and.
I don't know if the money is still there for those.
If I may, I was asked that question maybe a few months back in regards to the money that was voted in, in regards to that town meeting. And I think that the amount that was voted couldn't even get them one light in regards to the cost of the project. So it's something that we would have to do another assessment on. I know that money was folded into another intersection, I believe, but I think that it requires a lot more funding than what was allocated at that meeting. But happy to bring it forward with the town manager.
I think I would, my issue would be, there is so much traffic. Like, when I leave work at 5:00 to go down Canal Street to my house, it takes me literally 20 minutes every day.
Oh, that's crazy.
It is. There's so much traffic that I, I had, I had emailed the chief, too, and after I read the letter. And that's my biggest concern, is this traffic backed up now? What's it going to be when you take a right turn on red in the center of town? I know that he was talking about moving the, because you can't, going down Elm Street, you can't turn right into Dunkin' Donuts, which is kind of crazy.
Yeah.
So maybe putting, moving that sign, I don't know. It's just.
You can't turn right into Dunkin' Donuts?
No.
No.
Because I did it once, and, because I didn't realize.
Oh, you can't, oh, right on red, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a little.
Into McLaughlin's.
It's a little further, isn't it? Okay.
And he was, he was going to look into why that sign was there also.
Oh, okay, interesting.
So do you think, then, we should talk with the chief and Matt, and feel, just talk these issues through and see what we can do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because obviously, I want to keep in mind what you were saying, Mary, about your experience on a daily basis. So in trying to mitigate one issue, it might create another. I, I would want both of them to weigh in on it, I think.
So yesterday, or was it yesterday, or Sunday? I don't know which day it was. I saw a resident on a scooter, on a wheelchair scooter. I mean, people had the green light, and she was going through the crosswalk. I mean, I was like, come on, this is why people get hit, you know?
Well, yeah, they're.
Like, never stopped the scooter. I mean, so I don't know.
I would be, I would just want to float the idea of doing an assessment of what already exists, what could, what is not working, like you've mentioned, what's not flashing, what should be flashing. And then, I guess, taking it from there, and then weighing in what the resident had said, and maybe seeing what already does exist. Because I'm sure, as has been noted prior, there are things in place that either are not working, not functional, or should be functional. So I think just making an assessment of that first is probably the first step.
Sometimes those lights, remember when they got stuck and nobody could go right on red? Nobody could turn at all.
Yeah, it's supposed to just work when the walk sign comes on, but I know they weren't functioning correctly.
Yeah.
But I haven't brought it up again. So I think it's probably.
It's worth looking into.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's a lot of people walking downtown and stuff, and I'll, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would definitely, if there was existing lights there that did not function, I think that's definitely worthy. I think that's a no-brainer worthy of looking into. To, to the point on Village Noel, I am pulling it up on Street View, there is the light there, so it may just not be functioning.
Oh, yeah.
What light is that?
It's a, it's a crosslight.
Right in the front.
That's what she.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah.
So, again, like, just making.
Didn't even notice.
Because I don't know, I don't drive over there every day.
But it's not like the, the modern ones that you see now.
No, it's the solo light that blinks.
Yeah, this is where, you know, they have a button, they push it, and those big flashing lights come on, so that people are aware.
Yeah, Goretty's definitely has a button one, but if that's not working either, I know that that, at least at one point, would press the button, that it would flash. I haven't seen anybody operating it, but I know at one point that was.
Yeah.
You pressed it, and that's what would get it to light up. Yeah, I don't know about this one specifically.
So we can have Matt, like, do, like, your, like, your point, take, do an assessment, and then if, either fix the things that are broken that he may or not even know about. And then if other ones, maybe it's a collaboration and conversation with the chief as well. But, yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. Let's start with an assessment. That's great. Thank you.
Well, and certainly of. Well, and certainly of existing stuff, right? I mean, if that's not working, I think that's a no-brainer. I mean, I think that's a good point worth bringing up. I'm not a huge generally fan of adding slowdowns on main roads. I am sort of a proponent of main roads being kept main roads, generally speaking. But I mean, again, we're talking about existing infrastructure. I personally think that it's a point worthy of bringing up.
Get the occupancy to bill off the mill.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right. That could change things too.
Part of the plan.
Yeah.
Was maybe putting a light in there.
Which I believe still is approved. It's just that thing's got to change hands, right?
I believe so.
I, I think that's actually a good point worth bringing up too, because I would hate to invest some sort of more stuff down there. And then something gets built and developed and we got to change it up. But again, at the very least, got to feel for what's going on, what's working and not working of what's already there. So those are good points.
So I meet with the chief again on a monthly basis now as I do with the town manager. So I'll let you know when I meet with them and we can discuss that.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody all set? Any, oh, come on up, Ginny.
Ginny Picking, Eight Lindy Street. I just want to say that gentleman that did the presentation earlier was very impressive. And he did a great job. And I have, I, a few of the seniors my age, younger and older, have approached me and asked if I knew when the senior center was going to be ready. I said, no, we didn't have a date. Their concern is they would love to see it open for the chain of lights. So if everybody can strive for that, I would really greatly appreciate that. They would really like to be in there for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on Zoom? Okay. Dates to remember. Here you go, Nick.
All right. So Red Robin will be giving 20% off food sales for the Friends of the Millbury Public Library. Show this flyer or simply mention the fundraiser to your server and have your sales counted. It'll be taking place up at the Millbury Shops at Blackstone Valley, October 15th, 2025. The Millbury Lions Foundation presents the Meat Raffle at the St. Charles every other Saturday from October to March from 2:00 to 5:00. Early bird tickets are at 1:30. The first date is going to be October 18th coming up. And the Summer Concert Series, last concert is going to be October 19th. It'll be Turtlehead with Sean and Lynn. And this will be taking place at the Asa Waters Mansion. It's the first Thursday of the month. The Historical Society located at the Asa Waters Mansion. Newly acquired portraits of early Millbury residents Harvey and Sina Pierce are on display along with other items rich in Millbury history. Admission is free. And their next date of open is October 19th, Sunday, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Millbury PAC 109 presents a silent auction, Police Placards fundraiser, November 7th, from 6:00 to 11:00 PM at the Millbury VFW Bar. Many gift cards ranging from $20 to $50 and various, from various establishments in town. Many big-ticket items like a signed Mike Tyson Everlast Boxing Glove, a signed Taylor Swift CD. Oh. And a signed Shaquille O'Neal jersey and much, much more will also be up for bid. Okay. The special town meeting is going to be taking place November 4th at the Millbury Junior Senior High School. Check-in starts at 6:00. Meeting will start at 6, I mean, excuse me, 7:00 PM. The last day to post, that's not for you guys. That's, that's for us. Oh, yeah, actually, the last day to post the warrant is October 21st. Last day to register to vote is October 24th at the Town Clerk's Office, which is open from 8 to 5:00 PM that day. The special town election is taking place November 18th at the Millbury Senior High School. Voting times are going to be from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The last day to post that would be November 10th. The last day to register to vote is November 7th from, to register to vote is November 7th from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And the last day to accept a mail-in ballot application or to vote absentee is November 10th at 5:00 PM. And the last day to apply for an in-person absentee ballot is November 17th at 12:00 PM. That was a mouthful, Jane. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Don't forget our citizens.
Okay, watch, also watch Public Access for Citizens Academy announcements. Our schedule will be set shortly and we'll begin signups in November. The annual turkey raffle at the Millbury First Congregational Church will be holding their annual raffle on Friday, November 21st at 6:00 PM. It'll take place at the St., at the Charles Mini VFW Post, South Main Street. Doors open at 5:30 PM. Top prizes will include 500 cash, 250 for an Amazon gift card, a case of assorted wines, and a Thanksgiving dinner basket with turkey. Numerous items will be on display and raffled off during the evening. Refreshments will be sold during the event. Please come and enjoy the fun on November 21st. Raffle tickets will be available at Goretty's on October 11th, 14th, 18th, 25th, and November 1st and 8th. Okay, this is the recycling. Is there any other? Okay. The Trex Company is hosting the Recycling Challenge since 2006 with the goal of educating the public on the importance of plastic film recycling through the schools and community recycling programs. Participants are to collect plastic film with the goal of recycling a minimum of 1,000 pounds of plastic in a 12-month period. The participating organization receives a Trex bench when it reaches the goal. Each participating organization is only eligible for one bench in a 12-month period. So please drop off your plastic film recycling to the bin at town hall and the one at the senior center when it reopens. The Millbury Chain of Lights is coming soon. The 26th Annual Chain of Lights is happening Sunday, December 7th from 10:30 AM to 4:30 PM. So make sure you mark your calendars. There will be a variety of entertainment, crafts, food and fun available throughout Millbury. Please visit the Chain of Lights Facebook page for much more information. And there's an update on the Winter Banner Program, starting in the 2025, 2026 season. The winter banners will be managed by the Millbury Chain of Lights instead of the Millbury Beautification Initiative. This change will provide the same sponsorship opportunity for local businesses to have their names on a winter banner in the, in a new way that supports an important community event. If you are interested in participating in the Winter Banner Program, please reach out to the Chain of Lights at millburychainoflights@gmail.com. I promise she responds. I just bought my banner for my business. So you will be in good hands. And that is all I have.
Isn't there a 12 festival at the Asa Waters this weekend?
I don't know.
I thought I saw something.
Oh, there is. Yeah.
A festival at the mansion?
Oh, yeah, Sunday. Oh, here I go.
There we go.
I pulled it out.
Sunday, yeah. Yeah. You, do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Okay, I'll read off of your iPad. Save the date. Sunday, October 19. Fall Fun Day is taking place at the Asa Waters Mansion from 12 until 5 with live music, food vendors, and a chili cook-off.
Oh, well, there you go.
What a better way to kick off fall.
I can't think of a better way.
And the band playing is going to be Turtlehead at 2:30 this afternoon.
So Sean Turner and Lenny Anderson, 12 to 2.
12 to 2 for Sean and Lynn Anderson.
That was fun last year I went. It was a good time.
I think I need to go.
You had me in chili.
I saw something.
Yeah, no, I, I'm supposed to be at that. And I'm like, wait a second. It's not in here. Thank you.
Good catch.
Good catch.
Okay, no mail. Nobody wants to give us any money. Dang. Okay, on a good note, community events and positive stories about Millbury. I just have one. I attended the open house at the fire department. It was very well turned out.
Oh, good.
Had pizza, popcorn. And great job by the Millbury Fire Department and the ladies auxiliary. Thank you for doing that. They even had the, I guess we housed the hazmat truck. So they had a gentleman there inside explaining.
Oh, great.
He was very excited to be asked to come. So I think we're headed in the right direction over there.
Did you see the new truck too?
I saw the new truck, yes. I couldn't go near it. It was all caution tape. Ray Pia made sure I didn't go.
No touchy.
I just have one thing. I just want to thank all the authors and community members who turned out to meet the Author Day hosted by the Friends of the Millbury Public Library. The turnout was really, really nice. I know it was a beautiful sunny day that day, but I'm hoping that the Friends of the Library also do that in the wintertime. I think it was a really great event for families, young kids to, you know, read, have a chance to, you know, learn a little bit more about what the library does and what they, what the services they provide for our community members. And I know Teresa does an amazing job over there engaging young kids into the program. But just a huge shout out to the Friends of the Library for putting that on and engaging authors from all over central Massachusetts, including several Millbury residents who, you'd be surprised how many authors we have in town.
I was surprised when I saw.
It's incredible. Yeah, we have a lot of gifted writers and people you would not expect who write books, write books. So shout out to Tony Gallo. I had no idea he has several books self-published. So super exciting stuff, but I just wanted to share that. So.
I had bought Allison Hall's three books, you know, and she autographed them for Levi, Chloe. But her last book is, Chloe brought it over this weekend. She said, Grammy, this book is about me and you. I said, it certainly is. Queen for a day.
I was wondering where that was going.
It's a cute book too. She writes good stories. Anybody else? Okay, entertaining motion to adjourn.
I will motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Everybody, who didn't, oh, you two, oh, you guys, they will start down here. All in favor?
I'm looking at Brian, looking at you like. Thank you, everybody.
Is everybody looking at me again?